San Dimas City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 24th will come to order. Person Batacos, will you please leave the pledge?
Yes, everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize Keith Bachelor, who is a local artist, who has made and continues to make this city proud. And if you haven't had an opportunity, which you probably haven't, to go by and see the new train station, you'll be pretty happy. In the bridge area there, we have all of the stuff that's going on. He's helped us with it, and he did a great job with the placards and everything. We appreciate it. I guess he's been a local... I'm gonna read this thing, and it's probably gonna tell me everything I'm about trying to say. So we'll go from there. Your exceptional artistic contribution to the city of San Dimas and the San Dimas community through the creation of the bridge artwork for the city transit lines. The city of San Dimas extends its deepest appreciation to you for sharing your creative talent and vision with our community. As both a resident and artist, your work has added a unique and meaningful touch to the public, to this public infrastructure, one that reflects the identity, the heritage, and the spirit of San Dimas. The bridge artwork now stands as a lasting symbol of our civic pride and artistic excellence, offering inspiration to both residents and visitors alike. Your dedication to enhancing the visual landscape of our city helps to further enrich the daily lives of those who live, work, and travel here. With sincere gratitude, the city council and the community proudly recognizes your role in shaping a more vibrant and connected San Dimas. Mr. Bachelor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of you, and this is quite an honor. You know, I'm a 39-year resident of San Dimas, and I grew up in Covina, so I know the city very well. And it was really fun for me to do the murals for the city. And the neat part is that they'll be there for many, many years. So, thanks again. And Hildy also, they were very helpful to me. And, or the long period we had to wait till we finally got to do the finished arts. And anyway, thank you, Scott, for all you did. Thank you, Ben. Thank you so much.
Each and every time you go under that bridge, you'll be able to see those murals. And, you know, you didn't know what they were to look like by looking at the little piece of papers that we kept getting, but they sure show a real history of our city. And thank you once again. Appreciate it. Okay? And now, something we've been waiting for for a while. In case we didn't realize it, but Metro is coming to town, and we got the LA County Sheriff's here, gonna talk to us. A little bit of presentation on how they're going to continue to make us safe in our transit area. Lieutenant Jones? And a staff, we're gonna give a staff report first, I guess.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. So, the intent of this presentation is to inform the city council and the community about the extensive public safety planning efforts undertaken in preparation for the Gold Line's opening. Now, to start, Sherry and myself are gonna briefly outline the city's five-year planning efforts for the Gold Line's opening. And then afterward, we're gonna turn the bulk of the presentation over to Brian Jones from the LA County Sheriff's Department Transit Services Bureau, and Robert Gummer from LA Metro. So, as we all have heard, the Gold Line is set to open this year. While Metro hasn't released the exact date yet, they've indicated it's expected later this summer. The city has been proactively planning for this opening, ensuring the station will be clean, safe, and accessible. The city's preparations have included adopting ordinances, enhancing infrastructure, and coordinating public education efforts. I'd like to highlight some of the strategic policy and program updates that have been implemented in preparation for the Gold Line. Our most recent ordinance was the adoption of the shopping cart ordinance. Now, this ordinance sets clear standards for shopping cart management and retrieval, and it requires businesses with 10 or more shopping carts to develop and implement a retrieval plan, ensuring they take proactive steps to prevent cart loss and recover abandoned carts. Other ordinances that were adopted include the anti-camping and the transit use ordinances, which prohibit camping near transit areas and ensures facilities remain dedicated to transit use. Another important update was the addition of the Housing Services Coordinator position and our partnership with LA CADA. LA CADA is a licensed and certified substance use and behavioral treatment provider. So, the Housing Services Coordinator works directly with the LA CADA team on case management and proactive outreach to unhoused individuals throughout the city. In fact, this year, the city council expanded the LA CADA contract, increasing their presence in the city from three to five days a week. And lastly, I'd like to mention the parking management plan. The city is working to finalize a parking plan that will help protect neighborhood access, establish permit zones, and improve rider turnover strategies. So, on this next slide, you'll see a timeline of the city's Gold Line preparations. And given Sherry's extensive involvement in this planning process, I'd like to turn it over her. She's our Public Works Director to walk us through it.
Evening, Council. This slide's intended to show you just a brief timeline of some of the activities that have gone on behind the scenes. Often, we see a sign appear, and it doesn't appear out of magic. We've actually been working on the parking utilization study since 2020. And as part of that, one of the findings of that study was that we needed to, recommended we implement a permit parking municipal code text amendment, which this council did in 2021 to allow neighborhood parking. We've also, council also adopted a new bus shelter standard in 2022 to provide a more, safer infrastructure for bus riders. It also allows us to keep the bus shelter cleaner. Then, we've also, councils also, we've developed a new standard for trash enclosures to try to keep those facilities cleaner. We, council has approved a downtown trash enclosure project funding, and we're getting ready to bring that back to council for award. This would be for the trash enclosures west of San Dimas Avenue and north and south of Benita Avenue in the downtown. So, we're looking at for those trash enclosures, they'll be completely enclosed and lockable, and also provide lighting. So, and then hopefully, we're nearing the end of our parking management plan. Hopefully, in the next few meetings, we'll have a final plan moving forward and can protect the parking in our municipal lots and streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Next, I'd like to bring up Acting Captain Brian Jones, and he's gonna be going over the Transit Services Bureau's plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members. Thank you for having us today. We appreciate this opportunity to be here and present and answer any questions that you may have. Myself and Deputy Chief Robert Gummer, the Deputy Chief of Service and Security and Law Enforcement for LA Metro. So, as you'll see here, Transit Services Bureau, we are, we utilize a community-based approach, coupled with the proactive policing measures that we have. We have several layers of law enforcement teams that we utilize to address various issues that we have, challenges within the system. And by that, we recognize that Transit Services Bureau, transit policing, it's a specialized policing that requires special attention. So, as we look through, that we traverse over 900 square miles of bus lines, so not only are we transit, we're also bus lines. And we're not just concerned about the very beginning of the line or the very end of the line, it's every stop in between, including the city of San Dimas. So, with that, there's, have over 100 miles of rail lines specific to the A-line, which is, which is the line that's gonna traverse through your city. So, with that, we have a total of 45 rail stations, once it fully opens up. And whether our special policing units are on the platforms, or on the trains, or at the bus depots, we are working to ensure the safety of all of our ridership and also the communities that we go through at each stop along the way. Next slide? Okay. So, one facet of our approach to law enforcement on the transit system has to do with patrol. We have numerous deputies that respond to calls for service, both in black and white patrol cars. But then, we also have special teams that actually ride the trains and are there, present, and to deal with quality-of-life issues on the trains, and help mitigate any issues and provide a safe environment for our ridership. We have six different special teams, and we'll go into that here in a little bit. But we're also supported and augmented administratively with all of our support personnel, timekeeping, and procurement, and things of that nature. Part of our special teams, we have K-9. And our K-9 units deal with and address suspicious packages, terrorism, and threats of that nature to a public transit system. So, we have eight K-9 dogs, coupled with a handler, and supervised by one K-9 sergeant. So, we respond all the time. We respond in tandem with our special assignment unit. They work and train hand in hand, and they work together, and they deploy together when we have a suspicious package that needs to be cleared. And they do seek and obtain TSA certification annually. We have an amazing detective bureau. I'd like to brag a little bit here. Our detectives have an excellent solve rate, actually higher than that of patrol, as it relates to our Part 1 crimes. So, with the advent of Metro's foresight of having so much CCTV everywhere, I mean, when you do a crime on the system, I mean, with all the different tools that we have available to us, we do, we do an excellent job of ensuring that our transit system's safe. So, we can handle everything, every crime that's out there, up until murder, so up to attempted murder, and we file throughout all the LA courts. Now, I previously had mentioned the special assignment unit. Now, that, special assignment units are bifurcated. We have 16 deputies, two sergeants. We have a north team and a south team. Obviously, San Dimas would be, fall within our north team. If there were an instance in which we would need to have additional attention, we could have our south team come up and augment and help and assist with any issues that we have. But here we are in the city of Pasadena. They have armored vehicles. They train, train, train to address any sort of issues that could be related to terrorism, active shooters, things of that nature. All of our special assignment units, our deputies, are trained in plainclothes operations. And we really find that that is excellent use on our system as well, ensuring that everyone's doing what they should be doing. So... Now, every part of the system has a team leader that's assigned to that section of the track and bus system. So, we have seven bonus deputies that work as team leaders, and they serve and liaise with the cities and Metro, and address any sort of quality-of-life issues, anything like that. Now, it's also important to note, Deputy Rafael Feliciano couldn't be here today, but he is the team leader that will be servicing San Dimas Metro Station, and that's his contact information there. And will also be available afterwards should you need that information or anyone in the audience. So... Now, as I mentioned before, we have the team that does nothing but ride the trains. That team is, has 16 deputies and one sergeant. The sergeant that oversees a commuter enhancement team is right here in our audience, Sergeant Jasper there, and does an excellent job of ensuring that we are out there and being seen and engaging with our ridership. Now, something that's, like I mentioned before, the transit system is specialized policing. Metro, in its foresight, thought it was so important to address the unhoused on the system. And they have authorized nine bonus deputies who are trained and have hundreds of hours of mental health training, de-escalation training, and they do nothing but work with those who are experiencing mental health crisis. So, with that, we have our nine bonus deputies. We have a sergeant that oversees them. And augmented with this team, we have two Department of Mental Health clinicians that also deploy with these teams that can help and assist with not only just addressing the problem that these people are having, but they also do follow-up and casework, and ensure that we're meeting the needs of our ridership, both housed and unhoused. And this is our Office of Special Projects. Maisha could not be here today, but our other secret weapon is right there in the back, that Deputy Penn back there, does a wonderful job of getting out there and getting the message out. And he's a whiz on social media. And so, we're out there to communicate, and we'd love to liaison and partner with your PIOs. Any type of messaging that you'd like to get out, we're here to work with you and be an asset to the city of San Dimas. So, they also do various events to get out into the community, Coffee with the Captain, the Metro Bus Rodeo, and Hook of the Month. And Maisha is also our mental wellness coordinator as well. Now, these are the various shifts and locations that we have. So, Transit Services Bureau is deployed mainly out of the Rail Operations Center, which is in the city of Linwood. However, we do have a large station here in Irwindale, just up the way. And the folks that are gonna be deployed to service the city of San Dimas are gonna come out of Irwindale. So, you're not gonna get deputies that are coming all the way from Linwood to come and service this area. They're gonna be in this area, and they're gonna have three different shifts. Day shift is gonna consist of as early as 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 6:00 to 2:00, and then PMs. There's no lapse in coverage there. All the way through the early morning shift is 24-hour coverage. So, there's our dispatch number, one number to call, and they can dispatch folks to whatever issue you guys are facing. So, as it relates to department-wide resources, I know that the city of San Dimas also contracts with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. But as it relates to issues on the transit system, we also have the full complement of all of the resources that the Sheriff's Department comes to bear. And our Arrow and SEB and Special Enforcement Bureau, major crimes and special victims, we can handle it all, and we work hand in hand with all those units. Now, the foothill expansion, as you'll see, as was mentioned, summer of 2025, the city is gonna extend from the city of, right now, APU Citrus is the last stop. It's gonna extend to Glendora, San Dimas, Laverne, and Pomona this summer. So, within this deployment on days and PM shift, you're gonna have a two-deputy unit that's going to do nothing but go back and forth between Glendora and Laverne. And so, that's gonna incorporate San Dimas. I see that the prongs are touching Glendora and Laverne, but like I said before, they're gonna, they're gonna also service San Dimas. And Pomona being the end of the line, we're gonna have, that's gonna be a fixed post, and we're gonna have two deputies there on days and PMs, and they're gonna be there to address the, any end-of-the-line issues that may be experienced. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Deputy Chief of System Security and Law Enforcement, Rob Gummer.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Rob Gummer, Deputy Chief of System Security and Law Enforcement. So, you know, get an opportunity, you know, just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity to talk about, you know, not just, you know, our strategies that we have when it comes to our approaches of safety that have been very successful, particularly over the past two years, but also the resources that we offer in conjunction with our law enforcement partners. You know, when I say law enforcement partners, I really mean that. It was very important for us to be here and stand together and to show how unified we are. Nothing's more important to us than safety and the safety of our patrons and employees. We've done a lot of great work together, you know, working to improve the safety system-wide, you know, and a lot of it's because we have a very holistic approach to safety. You know, so in addition to our law enforcement partners, we have several resources that are out there. Some, you know, that have been very highly publicized, who are Metro Transit ambassadors, for instance. You know, they help with wayfinding out there in the system. Obviously, now with new stations, we'll have a lot of these resources available to the riders, particularly since there probably likely be a lot of new riders who are unfamiliar with, you know, how to navigate the system, you know, how to get access to the bike hub, all of the different, you know, resources and amenities that we're gonna have plugged into these respective stations. We also have Metro Transit Security Officers. So, those are a metro resource that enforce code of conduct and fair on our system. Next slide? We also, in addition to the resources that my partner, Captain Jones, talked about, we also contract through Department of Mental Health, you know, a significant number of resources when it comes to dealing with the homeless outreach. So, we deal with, we have 24 multidisciplinary teams that go out system-wide and try to connect those who are experiencing homelessness with the resources out there. And they are out there seven days a week, you know, and supporting us on all aspects of our rail system. Another important resource for us. And again, you know, trying to think about the problems holistically, recognizing all of the societal challenges that are out there also impact both our system, but also the perception of safety that our riders have. Next slide? All right. So, this gives me some space to talk about other resources that we have on the system. So, we also have contract security resources that will be deployed at our stations, and also riding between the various stations that we have. We'll have our partners with the sheriffs, of course. But there's a couple of things I just wanna add that really kinda give you a full scope of all the work that we've been doing. So, leading up to the station openings, we've actually held a... So leading up to the station openings, we've actually held a series of exercises that some of you might have seen. We had an active shooter exercise at the Pomona Station, and that was to familiarize our law enforcement, fire, you know, our metro staff with those stations themselves. But more importantly, familiarize those who are new to our stations to metro protocols, ensuring in the event that we do have an unfortunate incident, and that's everything from natural disaster to a critical incident, everyone knows what to do and what the protocols are. And we run a variety of different scenarios. Metro actually does more training and exercises than any other transit agency in the United States. We do anywhere between 20 and 30, and that's everything from tabletop to full scale. So for this line in particular, we had the active shooter exercise. We had train versus fire. And I believe we had another one that was on the bridge that was very complex. You know, again, those are to help familiarize, you know, the resources are new to the system. And also develop protocols and processes where everyone's familiar with each other as we're standing things up. We also open up in March, I think technically, our new Emergency Security Operations Center. It's a new 26,000-square-foot facility that encompasses both our Security Operations Center, which is 24/7 resource, and our Emergency Operations Center underneath one roof that allows us to keep our Emergency Operations Center in a cold state, so, or a warm state, I mean, meaning that in the event of a critical incident, natural disaster, or more recently, the protest, or any issues that are out there, we have a space to be able to pool all of the resources. So that could be all transit-related resources, our law enforcement-related partners, federal, state, local, metro, combination of the two, you know, all into one space. But I also want to highlight in our Security Operations Center, we've done something that's unique to, I believe, all of transit. And we have a unified command that's 24/7. So those who are unfamiliar with unified command, normally that's when you're bringing all representation of your public safety resources to bear all in one room. We actually have all of our public safety resources represented 24/7. So representation of our ambassadors, contract security, transit security officers, you know, the sheriffs, and LAPD, all in one room at the same time. What that allows us to do is minimize the response time when we know there's an incident going on in the system, because everyone's hearing everything at the same time. And our goal with that center is to be able to hear everything, see everything, know where our resources are at, and be able to communicate with those resources in real time as humanly possible. And you can imagine the ability to hear a situation in real time, and everyone's getting the same information, you know, allows us to quickly be able to, you know, pivot and decide, you know, what resource needs to address whatever that issue is and do whatever cross-coordination is necessary in addition to that. And then lastly, I just want to highlight the fact that as of yesterday, our new chief, Bill Scott, has reported to Metro. So I'd imagine very soon he'll be coming out here to meet all of you. So I just wanted to put that out there as well, because that's a new development. But we're very excited in working with our law enforcement partners to open up these stations. And I think one last thing I did want to add, that was in addition to everything I was already talking about, is that we've actually written the line between San Dimas and Glendora. I personally have been on there. We understand some of the challenges that are existing, particularly with the unhoused in between. Some of the work that we're doing in leading up to opening the stations actually improved some of the fencing along that line. We identified a couple of opportunities there because we're already seeing challenges of individuals crossing those tracks, which creates a significant safety issue, both for, you know, our riders, but also for the service at large. So some of those things we're working on right now. So I just want to add some transparency that we're aware of those challenges. We're actively working to address those. And we look forward to working with all of you to address those as well.
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate the city of San Dimas on all the hard work that you guys did in preparation for this, this summer, dating back over a decade, to all of the hard work that was put into, from the shopping cart ordinances to every step along the way. I know Rob and I were very impressed by that. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank and congratulate you for all the hard work that you guys have done and have the foresight and vision to implement those things. So you were prepared and weren't caught off guard, so kudos to you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Anyone have any questions of the lieutenant or the chief?
I do. Good job, both of you, and thank you for being here tonight. One for, I guess, Acting Captain Jones. You know, I know you guys train scenarios. This community has not dealt with a number of the impacts that it's about to when it sees this line go live. And one of the things that unfortunately in this community is a result of a CPUC decision was our grade separation. At some point, there will be a suicidal person standing on that bridge. And so I would just ask that at some point, there is a discussion and maybe a drill done so that the community understands what that looks like from both the TSB response, the Metro response, as well as what I think will be a response from the local sheriff's station, and also what that resource pool looks like. And I think it's important for the council to understand that resource pool is going to be multi-layered as it relates to how that response happens. That bridge is really Metro's issue, but the impact right directly below is a city issue. And I think that coordination of resources, as well as fire, would be a helpful discussion. There also is, which is interesting, it was never brought up in any of the sketches that we saw related to the bridge, but there are stairs as an evacuation site for that. One thing that was brought to my attention from some of the deputies working San Dimas Station right now is that homeless individuals or persons experiencing homelessness in other jurisdictions of Metro have made those their home and actually taken shelter inside of those evacuation staircases. So I just would share with you that I would hope that there are some patrols done to make sure those areas are clear for evacuations and emergencies. And then the second point is, is, you know, I appreciate the comments regarding the city's foresight and preparation and all of this. But one thing that was counterproductive, in my opinion, is, and you guys, I don't think have anything to do with it right now, but it will be your problem soon, is when this station opens, the city made a lot of effort to be smart about infrastructure and made a lot of effort to be smart about its decisions in bus stops in the future and things like this, to be able to make sure that they are passenger-centric, that they are motivated to support the mission of providing a temporary resting place. And yet, the infrastructure that was put in around the station, specifically near the parking area, has put in benches and has put in things that I think that if they were presented to like the homeless services team and others that are going to create situations that may warrant more time from like T-Met and some of the other resources you've discussed. So I just would say that, you know, that TSB response, you know, or even Metro response to that, really is going to look like a call going to the sheriff's station first that's going to end up routed to TSB. And I think that, you know, it's challenging, I guess, that, you know, we jokingly have talked about, well, is there going to be ambassadors? Or like you've put, or we even called them like station marshals, somebody that will be present to respond in a timely manner to the parking and to deal with these types of things? Or is that going to fall on the local station? I mean, I'm asking because I think that it's important for all of us to understand that, and you know, Acting Captain Jones also works contract law, so he's also kind of the guy to maybe talk about that too. But, but I just, you know, something for all of us to understand, because I think it's important, just like we have county parks and within the city limits, Sheriff's Department's Parks Bureau responds to that. But I know this partnership continues to really grow and really be exciting. But I don't want any false expectations or, you know, any, you know, I think that's the killer, is we set expectations, and then unfortunately, what happens sometimes is people believe this is what's going to happen right away. But I do know, and I do see Metro staff actually, when I drive to my workplace every day as I'm going past Lake and the other packs, and I think everybody's doing their part. But I just want, if you could, just talk to that a little bit. What can we expect when that line goes live in terms of the response to specifically P-E-H? And then the other part of it is, is, you know, as Travis shared, or Assistant City Manager shared, is the city's invested a sizable amount of money in Locata and our own homeless outreach efforts. And, you know, I know what the tendency is on the easy button is for San Dimas Station deputies just to hit up Locata and the city. And us being good team players probably will say, okay, let's help out. Let's try to get this person services. But there needs to be coordination, I feel, between both your teams and ours to make sure that if we did do some case management with somebody, that if they're in the coordinated entry system, that we all know that we're talking the same language to find them housing. But you guys aren't starting from scratch if we've worked with them, and vice versa. I'd like to try to make sure that, you know, I think coordinated entry is probably the way that happens without dealing with all the P-H-I stuff. But anyways, if you guys could just talk a little bit to that, and I know there was a lot of spaghetti thrown, so have fun.
Sure, sure.
I took notes on everything I asked.
Yeah, so I would speak from experience from a lot of work that we've done at a variety of different stations, you know. So to your point, initial point of, you know, unhoused, you know, taking shelter in some of our emergency evacuation areas. We've done a lot of work over the past year and a half to keep that clear through patrols, environmental interventions, and a host of stuff. I think when it comes down to the parking and the stations and whatnot, I think there's going to be a lot of unforeseen things that we're going to learn in real time. But I'm confident, particularly, you know, so some inside baseball, you know, our groups meet at least three times a week. So we have our Chief Executive Meeting that I chair that has, you know, Cap Jones, you know, LAPD, you know, our homeless outreach group, our station experience group, you know, who talk through things at strategic and policy level and trends and big issues that we're seeing. Every Tuesday, we actually have a meeting about with our field resources who are talking about what they're seeing. And then every Wednesday, internal to Metro, there's an internal meeting talking about trends and issues that we're seeing amongst the internal departments. It's everything from our custodian staff, facilities and maintenance, everything in between, right? So what allows us to do is be very nimble at addressing issues as they're coming up. And oftentimes, there's things that we didn't think about, or maybe no one thought about. And now we have this persistent issue, a gray area issue, where it's like, well, who actually is responsible for that particular area? And we work through wherever the partners, that's internal to Metro, obviously external, you know, to the city or whatnot, and bring everyone together to really talk through those problems, you know. So, you know, I think, I guess the level set, the expectation, you know, I think we're going to learn a lot within those first three to six months. But I'm confident that we have the right mechanisms in place in order to approach it as partners. And I think the one thing that I take away as a key lesson learned, you know, it's not Metro versus a community or vice versa. You know, it's a public resource. You know, we have to make sure that we're being, I guess, treating it the way it should be, where it's a joint partnership. We're doing our part to make sure that we're keeping it clean and serviceable and whatnot for the community. And if there's challenges that we're finding as a result of that resource, then those things we can address together.
Very good. And to speak on the response component of it, from a law enforcement perspective, specifically addressing the parking lots and things of that nature, anything that's Metro's property, we have an obligation to respond and address those issues. Obviously, if there's something that's emergent, to your point, San Dimas, if they were closest, we'd coordinate with them, and then we would respond and address it from there. We'd basically take over the issue, take the body. We would encumber and tie up San Dimas resources needlessly. And any, any time spent dealing with a Metro issue, there's, speaking from my contract law side of the house, they can punch in the reporting district in which they're clearing that call. And those, the minutes that San Dimas deputies use to address issues on our system will get, the San Dimas will not get charged for those minutes. Those minutes will get dumped into Metro's bank, and it'll get counted against their costs. So I just wanted to clarify that. And to address the other point as it relates to folks potentially jumping suicides, things of that nature, I wanted to also relay that our T-Met response units are also crisis negotiators and have that training as well. So they've gone through a significant amount of training and are ready, willing, and able and trained up on all of that. So, but as time progresses, and like Rob had mentioned, there's going to be several things that may present themselves. And I'm confident that through our teamwork and our partnership, that we can get through those. And Craig Joyce is the executive at Metro dealing with homelessness. He's a clinician. And we just actually just met a few weeks ago. With all of the wraparound resources that we have that Metro comes to bear, and they have numerous contracts with all types of community resources, from beds to placements and to rehab and things of that nature. And I'm also confident that SB 43, once it goes live in LA County, January 1st, I have already tasked my T-Met sergeant with learning all the intricacies of SB 43 and ensuring that the definition of gravely disabled, that they're familiar with that, they're trained up on that, and that we can ensure that those that are service-resistant get the services that they need.
I just wanted to thank you both for responding to that. One other thing I would just put on your radar, and then I'm done, is, you know, the city, when we dealt with the bridge, there's a very unique thing, and it's Montevista. And we asked that we would be able to allow people to go through. I don't know whose property that is. I don't know if that state is part of Metro's property or not. But it is the hole that people can go through to get to the San Dimas Grain Company or just to parking on the other side. I've heard from the station deputies that there are people experiencing homelessness that are in fact camping there periodically, in there to take shelter. You know, if that is in fact still Metro property, as it's, I mean, the soil itself is supporting the bridge, I would think it is. It might be the smallest RD of Metro in that area. But, you know, I just share that with you as one of the complexities of just this particular situation and how this was designed, that if those minutes are in fact attributable to Metro, then I would just ask that the station is aware of that because I do know that, I've heard the deputies already talking about people hanging out in that area, having to clear it out and push people out. And I think a lot of that still has to do with the construction. But as this goes more live, as you know, thankfully, we're not a end-of-line. And so that's a whole different conversation. You can have that with the end-of-line folks. But I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing and look forward. And if there is an opportunity for an MOU with Locata, with us, in a way that makes sense, to be able to ensure that we're all talking, then maybe we should talk about that in the future because I think that will also make it easier perhaps. And if it is a situation that we can respond together more swiftly, I think we all win. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I had a question, and I share your concerns. It's exactly where I was going. Who do we call for what type of deal? And just more simply, you know, a resident is riding the train. Something happens that they need to report, they need some help. Who do they call? How do they know who to call?
Excellent question. And I think this is probably a good time to queue up the YouTube video.
You're welcome.
This is the Metro's Transit Watch app. You can download it on your phone. And if you are on the train, it can triangulate your location.
My apologies. So this is the Metro Transit Watch app. You can download this on your phone. It'll triangulate your location utilizing GPS if you're unfamiliar with exactly where you're at. And you can request an emergency response to your location. Or you can simply complain about or have issues related to graffiti or things like that addressed if you're on the train. So it'll address the full spectrum of concerns.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much for that. That cues me into my next idea here, is that we have our MySanDimas app. I would propose that we have a link for this. is that we have our My San Dimas app. I would propose that we have a link for this in our app, so people, when they go to the My San Dimas, are directed to the Metro, and it's more fluid, and we don't waste time and, you know, safety.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
If I could add just another note to Transit Watch, so my team actually manages that application. And the reporting goes in two different locations, you know. So if it's a cleaning and maintenance issue, it goes directly to our maintenance help desk, which is monitored 24/7. Any security issue actually goes to our Security Operations Center, and that information is monitored 24/7. And inside the application, even though it briefly shows that there is a report log, so, you know, anyone using that application can go in and see what happened to their report, you know, and make sure, and it allows us to be accountable on our side, to show that we're not just ignoring stuff as it's coming in, it's being addressed. And whatever that outcome is, it's going to be updated inside that report log.
A couple of questions. Speaking to Rachel's point about, you know, who to call when there's an issue, I'm assuming the app is fantastic. I absolutely love that. If there was some emergency that requires a more immediate response, people, I'm sure, are still able to dial 911. But have we experienced any issues with where that 911 call gets routed? If it's getting routed to the right people, if they're on the Metro, or if it's going to local agencies along the route?
Yes, so I can take that. So essentially, it's going to go to, it'll get transferred over to the Rail Operations Center, which is where our dispatch is at. We have dispatchers that are there behind the desks, typing in calls for service. And if someone calls 911, it'll get transferred to them. They know the location where they're at and know which units to closely dispatch. To your point, though, if it is emergent, and they need to get ahold of the local, whether it's a police department or a sheriff's department, they will utilize any resource available to them to get help as expeditiously as possible.
Perfect. Great. And then the other thing that kind of piqued my interest was you were talking about a unified command center. And the way that that kind of interested me was, I worked in law enforcement at a, in the area of a terminus city, or a terminus station, which caused a lot of impact to our city in a law enforcement capacity. And it felt like a lot of times, the people that we were dealing with, being related to the Metro system, we were starting at ground zero with, they're not from here, we don't know anything about them. A lot of times, they were a significant challenge for us dealing with them locally. The way that I kind of see the way you've laid out that unified command center is being somewhat of a real-time crime center almost, and making it so that nobody has to start at ground zero. So I don't know if that's just a terminology difference, or if there's some sort of way that we envision rolling it into a full real-time crime center, or what that looks like.
I think from a tactical standpoint, what you're describing is accurate. So the whole idea behind it, and like for myself, and actually a lot of my team, we have a lot of command center experience, both in the military, but also on the, for me, it's the federal law enforcement side with the FBI. It's the idea of being a place where we're receiving real-time information, plus being able to see it on our buses, on our trains, you know, as close as possible, and to hear. So we have access to LA RICs, and, you know, so we're able to listen into the local dispatch as well, to understand in real time precisely what's going on. The benefit and the value of having a law enforcement representative there, they're also getting that same information, and they'll know what resources they need to reach out to and start collating. And you kind of, you know, you get rid of some of the noise and some of the miscommunication at times that can cause a delay in that response. We've already seen the benefits of that, you know, in real time, particularly with most recent events, you know, allowing us to quickly, you know, look at a situation, remove any confusion that's out there and what's actually happening on the ground, because everyone's seeing everything, and they're hearing everything. So now they're all just talking about, okay, who needs to do what, who's going to respond where, you know, what do we have on the ground at that point in time? And it's really just the beginning. We're looking at a lot of opportunities to really expand that capability. And now that we're continuing to expand our system, I think there's some opportunities to do some really cool stuff with our new partners.
If I could piggyback on that, to what you experienced as being an end-of-line city where you work, I also want to bring into focus that our Transit Mental Evaluation Team, I can basically describe a person, their writings. I've had conversations with you. You've approached me with a person's scribbles, and based off of a picture of a document where someone was writing illegible writings, our T-Met personnel knew exactly who that person was, their first name, their last name, they knew that they were from Nigeria, they knew that all the mental health issues that they had onboard, they knew where they hung out, and they had pictures of them, they're documented. They use Monday.com as a resource to store and track all of the interactions that they have with the homeless. So it's not just, I kind of, just addressing the homeless and passing them off. They actively monitor and are familiar with this. And like I had mentioned before, we take this as a community approach, with the community being the system in and of itself. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Eric?
Thank you very much. What time are the breakfast sandwiches coming in?
They'll be here shortly, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And we look really forward to working with everybody.
Us too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for the public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for a discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk?
First speaker is Doran Barnes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've got three topics to cover, so I'm going to see if I can beat the clock here. But first off, as the Chair of your 2026 Independence Day Committee, we are continuing to work really hard to bring an incredible celebration to the community in 2026 for the 250th Independence Day of the United States. We have secured sponsorships from Better Home Financial, Mike Wallace, and Vicky Malazewski from Kaleo Realty. We all know her, Six Foot Vicky. They both come in as platinum sponsors, huge, huge start to this effort. Foothill Transit has stepped in as a sponsor, South Coast Air Quality Management District is a sponsor, and we now have Southern California Gas also as a sponsor. That gives us enough resources to secure what we believe will be truly the pinnacle of the event, which is a drone show. If you can imagine looking to the north and seeing this incredible drone show coming out across the skies to celebrate Independence Day, it's going to be awesome. We have enough money to do a good drone show. We want to do an incredible drone show. And so we are continuing to seek the resources that'll be required to make that happen. And we're going to be pounding on lots of doors. We appreciate your help and your support in advancing that effort. So lots more to come, but the momentum is building, the excitement is building. This is a year from now, and I've had a few folks ask about, is it coming this year, coming next year? So that's item one. Item two, in my role as a member of your Planning Commission, I have been elected to serve as the second Vice President of the California League of Cities Planning and Community Development Division. That would have me move up to first Vice President next year and President the following year. So really appreciate the ability to serve our city as a Planning Commissioner, but also in a statewide role and your support for doing that. And then thirdly, quickly, given the topic that you all just went through, in my role as Chief Executive Officer at Foothill Transit, we are going to be starting a new line that will serve the San Dimas Station and link Cal Poly Pomona and Mount San Antonio College. Hopefully, that's going to start on the same day that the rails start. We're trying to work with our partners at LA Metro to make that happen. And the Sheriff's Transit Security Division, Foothill Transit has entered into a deeper contract with the Sheriff's Department to also support security on our services in addition to the broader Metro services. So want to thank the mayor for his support on the Foothill Transit Board, and again, representing our city well there. So a lot of things happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Dana Malakoff.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Mr. Mayor, and the council, and the city, and all the community. Oh, sorry. Hi, everyone. I'm just here from the San Dimas Library, the interim community library manager. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about some upcoming programs and some of our services. Coming up this coming Thursday, we have Bubble Mania. You can come and learn about the science of bubbles and see giant bubbles, rainbow bubbles, and many more. It's an interactive program. It'll be guaranteed fun for everyone, and it's for ages three and up. First come, first served. Hopefully, we'll see some of you guys there. And another upcoming program is Roll for a Poem. And this is a teen, oh, this is an adult program. Come play a fun and easy dice game with us that will result in a good time and a unique poem created by you. This activity is meant to be fun, a fun way to spark creativity, get words on paper, and share our artistic sides. So that should be fun. That's on June 28th at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. And we always have our storytime on Fridays. So it's coming Friday for ages two to five at 10 o'clock. So you're welcome to come to that. And then online, we have Trailblazers in Conversation on June 26th at 6:00 p.m. on Zoom. Our library director, Sky Patrick, and Tony Valenzuela will be speaking in conversation. And he's the Executive Director of One Institute. So that's coming up. And then I also want to tell you just a little bit about some of our services that we have and resources. This is a flyer for emerging adults that has some things that we have. And so one thing we have that's really cool, if you don't know about, is we have a career online high school where you can get your high school diploma as a second chance to do it. It's through an accredited, it's an accredited high school diploma. So it's different than like a GED or something. And adults can do it. They can apply for that on our website. And we also have many computers you can check out, and hotspots you can check out. We have laptops you can use in the library, and we have printing. You can like set what you want to print from your house, and then come to the library and print it on our printers. You can use our Wi-Fi from anywhere in the parking lot. We have plenty of citizenship resources that you can use for people that are trying to obtain citizenship, and a lot of legal references that you can use in our Legal Information Resource Center. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bye.
Next speaker is Sylvia Melendez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Melendez. I'm the CEO of the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce. Today, I want to remind everybody that the State of the City and update on business is this Thursday. Doors open at 7:30 in the morning, and the program starts at 8:30. The event will take place at the Senior Center right across the way. And during the presentation, we'll have an update on the city of San Dimas from Mayor Bader, and we'll have an update on business from Board Chair Michael Wallace from the chamber. Light food and drinks will be provided. The community is encouraged to attend. RSVPs are not required, but appreciated. And for more information, you could visit the San Dimas Chamber website at sanddimaschamber.org. And I'll leave some additional flyers in the back of the room. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sylvia.
And Mayor, we do have one last speaker card, but the speaker did not give their name. They're speaking on cleanliness and clean standards in the library.
Hello, council members. I'm not familiar with any of you, but it's nice to see your faces for the first time. I didn't know that the library had a new interim director, so that was news to me. But I didn't know that they got rid of their previous one.
She retired.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, my concern is in regards to the library about a particular problem that I think the library needs to address, and it's in regards to homelessness. And so my concern is that people, that I don't go there every day, but I go there pretty frequently, and I observe individuals that appear, from my point of view, to be getting there as soon as the library opens and staying there until the library closes. From what I can ascertain, that they do this every day. And so I know that it's a public place. I know that it's, you can't, you know, hold against someone that they're staying in a public place. Because I've asked people who worked there before, and they've told me, well, it's a public place, so there's nothing really we can do about it. But I was just going to ask, I know that this is a clean city. I mean, that's what San Dimas is known for. People who don't even live here, when they pass through the city, they see the aesthetic standards of the city. And so I think that it should be something that should be addressed. And we don't allow homeless people to get at any park in the city and then get their things, because this particular individual brings like three suitcases full of her stuff there, and she just hauls them in there, and then hauls them out when she's ready to leave. And so to me, I think that if that was happening at one of the parks in this city, it would not be tolerated. And I mean, let's use an indoor, since it's an enclosed building and not an outdoor park, if it were in the lobby of the city hall here, and some person, I mean, brought their stuff in there and loitered, I think you guys need to reexamine the definition of what loitering would constitute. Because to me, I can give you an example of a store I used to go to. Oh, by the way, I live in Laverne, but I wear the San Dimas shirt, because you guys are our good neighbors. And there's an example I can give you. On the Foothill Boulevard Vons, there used to be this homeless bum who would go in there. Every time I was there, like I said, I don't go there every day, but the days that I would go there, he was always there. And so over time, this went on for more than a year. And over time, I noticed that one day, he wasn't there. And I thought, oh, they probably thought about it and said, you know, why are we allowing this person to just sit in here from the time we open until the time we close? I haven't seen him there since. And so I think that maybe the library could look into doing some kind of a policy implementation in that regards. But that was my concern. Thank you very much. I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ruth Louvan, and I live here in San Dimas. I wanted to speak about the fee schedule. Specifically, I wanted to speak about the proposed changes and addition. That was Amendment 12526. I had an opportunity to review all the proposed changes and amendments. And upon reflection, I noticed that there was a dramatic increase in the fees, specifically with regards to community development. So I wanted to know exactly how these fees were being calculated. I went to the top of the column to where the fees were being calculated. And quite frankly, the mathematics where it said it was being calculated didn't actually match the top of the fee schedule column. I then also, now it's close, but it's not exact. I then also did a comparison between us and one of our sister cities, Glendora. And I discovered that in just one area, for instance, Tenanted Parcel Maps, Glendora's fee is $5,500. Our new fee will be $8,556.47 from $2,533. Now, I could give you several other examples, but they're all listed there. So I have a couple of questions. Number one, how exactly are these formulas calculated? Because I can't seem to figure it out, and I'm fairly mathematically savvy. Two, if they don't follow the lists at the head of the columns, exactly what are we using? And are they based on a percentage of the parcel of the housing? Or are they based on some other type of formula which is evenly weighted across commercial and residential property? Three, how's this going to impact our building and construction trades here within the city of San Dimas, and thus the homeowner, such as someone like myself? Because the fees have also changed for things like, you know, restoration. Because the fees have also changed for things like, you know, restoration and reconstruction here within our own homes? How will that affect someone like me? And then four, is there going to be outreach to the community and to the public so that we understand this new fee schedule, when it's going to take place, and exactly how it's going to impact us? So that we can make some executive decisions as to whether or not we actually want to do things like schedule changes or remodel our bathroom or put a new roof on or do whatever it is that we have to do. Thank you so much for your time and your hard work. I appreciate everything that you do. Have a great day.
Ms. Melendez, you do realize that this will be a public hearing in about an hour?
Yes, sir. I just need these questions answered. That's exactly why I'm bringing it up right now. I don't necessarily know if all of those things get addressed during the public hearing. So I just wanted to bring it forth because I don't know if those are some of the measures that get addressed in the public hearing or if you have your own, you know what I mean, agenda or different items that you're going to follow within the public hearing. I have every intention of being there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Mr. Holander?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents. I am very happy to be here. I'm here to make an announcement, and it's been almost a year in the making. Family and friends want to wish our mayor happy birthday this Thursday on the 26th of June. So we're here to say happy birthday, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think that 26th. As a birthday president, I'm doing the state of the union, uh, state of the city address on that morning. And it should not be, I guess we should say our assistant city manager's birthday is the same day, and he's going to go through the same exercise. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? We'll move on. Mr. Wasserman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Scott Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just to have a couple of brief recreation updates. Start with Kids Club and Teen City. This is our day camp for kids in grades one through nine. There are, we will be starting registration for weeks six through 10. Specifically, those are the weeks July through August 15, the conclusion of the program. The program is $150 a week. And for that, we provide healthy supervised activities between hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So if you're interested in that, you can find that information on our website and register. Something that's similar at Pioneer Park. We don't have the Kids Club at Pioneer Park, but we do have a free drop-in program between the hours of 10:00 to 2:00. We don't take roll. There's no need to register. There's no fee. It's just something that we offer fun, healthy activities for kids between the hours of 10:00 to 2:00, and that's at Pioneer Park. That's Monday through Friday, and that's through August 15. A couple of notes about summer. One is on days where the temperature exceeds 95 degrees, we activate our Senior Center as a cooling center. And this means that if you're home and you're hot and maybe you don't have air conditioning, you're welcome to come join us at the Senior Center where we serve chilled water. Usually, we'll have a nice movie going, and you can sit in the refreshing air condition. We'd love to see you there. Along that same theme, we'll talk a little bit about aquatics. We have Recreation Swim. It's just such a great idea to go for a nice dip in the pool when it's hot out. Recreation Swim is Monday through Friday, 1:30 to 3:45. And on Saturdays, from 12:00 to 2:00. So if you're looking to get a dip in the pool and it's really hot out, we hope you'll join us for that. And last, I just wanted to talk about music in the park. Every Wednesday, we've been having Farmer's Market here at Civic Center Park. And last week, we started our concert series. And we'll have concerts through, I believe it's about August 13. So every Wednesday between now and August, we'll have a concert in the park. Tomorrow night, Four Lads from Liverpool. And if you're thinking Beatles group, you're probably right. And next week, next Wednesday, July 2, will be the Silverados, and that's going to be country music. And this is all free to the public. We hope you'll come down and join us at Civic Center Park. We have the concerts. We have the Farmer's Market, lots of food and drinks. Lot of fun, free of charge. We hope you'll join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing will move, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and be well, and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council requests separate discussion.
Mayor, before you take a motion on the consent calendar, I have, I need to apologize for Councilmember Vienna for springing this on him without discussing first. But item number CC3 is a rezone of some parcels that are within 500 feet of property that Councilmember Vienna owns. So he should recuse himself from CC3. Of course, it's on the consent calendar, so you can stay on the dice.
That, just to be clear, that's going to be the East Commercial Street property?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to withdraw the motion, and then I will deal with that on the.
I will move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, on the vote, I will be recusing myself from item CC3, but supportive of all other items.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries with the exception of CC3, 5-0. And with CC3, Councilman Vienna recuses himself. Okay? That'll be the end of the consent calendar. We'll go on to other business. Adopt a Resolution 2025-38 approving the fiscal year 2025-26 operating and capital improvement budget. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director, here to present tonight's proposed 2526 operating and capital improvement plan budget. Before we start diving into the figures, I just want to kind of note what the building blocks of this budget were. Aside from obviously trying to continue to implement our capital improvement plan and to update our equipment and fleet, the goal of this budget was to keep our level of services intact, continue our programs, our operations, and not look at any proposed cuts to those operations with this plan. Even though ultimately there is a presented deficit, while other years have also presented those deficits where, for one reason or another, we've discussed in other past meetings, we've been able to overcome those projections with surpluses. And it's put us position where we're in a very strong financial position to absorb those, any chance of losses in this coming year. So it's worth continuing to provide those services and see where we end up and if we have to start changing course in the future. So to highlight the general fund, this year's projections total revenues just over $32 million with revenues and transfers in. Expenditures and transfers out are anticipated to be just below $32 million at $31.7 million. We'll also be using reserves to continue to fund our capital asset replacement fund and to fund some park projects, which after all these transactions would end up in a projected budget deficit of $981,944. Some revenue projections this year, we were a little bit more less conservative, especially in terms of interest revenues, where we've had some very strong returns in the prior year and this year. There are some considerations with that as we've heard discussions, obviously, from the President and from the Fed that, you know, he would like rates to go down a point. And the Fed's been holding steady, so where that ends up being could affect what our projections are. But right now, we're keeping those pretty, pretty high expectations for the coming year. Just to look back, over the years since 2022, our reserves have continued to grow. This year, we, in the budget, we anticipated 2425 to be about even. But as the year progresses, we think we may end up in a more favorable position than we're currently presenting. And obviously, in 2526, we discussed that we're right now looking at a close to million-dollar deficit. But we do want to see where mid-year nationals take us before we really start considering any major changes to our operations. Some factors that are leading to this deficit projection, and I apologize, a little bit of a mistake on the first line. The Public Safety Services contract increase ended up being 4.37%, so slightly less than that 4.5 number for the deputies. And sergeants' increase was 6.11%. Because there's so much more invested in deputies, that decrease from the 4.5 to the 4.3 ended up creating more savings than the increases to sergeants. So it ended up being a net positive for us. As far as employee salaries, as you approved in the last meeting, those are going up by 3.5%. There'll be a half percent increase to a total 13% for the Liability Trust Fund for Public Safety. Our per's contract unfunded liability costs are going to raise by about $194,000. Although we did, on per council's approval, make an additional $500,000 contribution this year. I don't know if they'll factor that into this bill when we get it next month, but it may affect them by lowering that cost a little bit this year. So we'll find that out when we get the bill next month. Our normal costs for each employee will go up by 0.06% for a total normal cost rate of 11.94%. We're also seeing close to $50,000 increases for rental control services. And the subscriptions, the technology that we utilize every day to increase our efficiencies, those typically have annual increases. And so we're projecting about $35,000 of the increases for our software programs. And then the 3% March-March CPI affects some of our contracts, mainly landscaping and custodial services. In terms of our special funds, these are funds that are limited to specific uses, whether it's roads, storm drain infrastructure, parks. Those are going to be looking to have a deficit of about $4.7 million. Of course, majority of this is for capital projects. So as these large capital projects get implemented and expensed, they'll start to naturally bring down these funds that we've been building up to complete these projects. Housing, we also have some major projects, including the wall at the Charter Oak. And the swimming pool will be doing some improvements there. So overall, we'll probably see a deficit in this fund, in the housing funds, by about $530,000. Overall, if we were to complete all the projects, purchase all the equipment, do all the operations as is in this plan, we would be looking at a total across the board, all funds, reduction of about $6.2 million. But that is, you know, considering very heavy investments in capital improvements, which we'll go over next. So some of our capital improvement plans, we have over $9.5 million in streets. The most, the biggest road will be Arrow Highway. That project is in this budget. We're also modernizing the rest of our fleet to tune of just over $1.55 million. We also have 1.1, almost 1.2 million invested in storm drain infrastructure. We still have a carryover project from last year. It's been rebudgeted $400,000, which actually, I think the contract came in a little higher than that to repair the City Hall roof. We also have $200,000 for mobile home rehabilitation, $126,000 for park restoration projects, and $41,000 to update and replace our telephone system at City Hall. Other non-capital expenses that are worth noting, $100,000 invested into our sewer master plan for the downtown. We're also looking at getting a consultant for, to update our record management, where we place our documents, how we store all the electronic documentation we have, how we can utilize our systems more efficiently. And then another community-wide survey, similar to the one we did a couple of years ago. So we can get a better idea of how we're performing, where the public thinks we can make enhancements, where we're performing and where we're underperforming to get the community input so we can incorporate those ideas into future budgets. One note for the community, this is the first year we have implemented a digital budget book. The version you've seen in the attachment is a PDF version of that digital budget book. But it is available right now online. It's a much more interactive platform where you can hover over charts and really have that data stand out for you. So it's good, so I think it's much more enhanced, much more user-friendly, much more transparent system. And it's also been a great enhancement for our department as changes are able to go across the budget book more rapidly. Makes for much more enhancements to accuracy across the budget where when we're doing these things manually prior, could lend itself to those type of problems. So very much ask the public to go to that digital platform on the website and check that out. And it's a much more easier way to soak in a very large budget document. So with that, staff recommends adoption of Resolution 202538 approving the fiscal year 2526 operating capital improvement program budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Thank you very much, Director O'Brien. My first question is, is I know that we have seen quite a few concerns about changes in consumer spending, tariffs, and everything else. Have we seen any reflection in that appear in some of the sales tax revenue we're collecting? And does that at all significantly differ from any of the forecasts that we had? And have you revised any forecasts based on change in consumer sentiment at all?
We've been maintaining the projections by HDL, but the last two months of remittances have come in lower than previous projections by HDL. I'm not, it's not enough for me to say we need to revise next year's projections. I do think there will be some slight rebound. Like I said, because last year, we did have some of those true-ups from corrections on reporting that were due to different entities or different cities. So I don't think we'll be much less than what was projected, but we have seen some slight decreases in our sales tax returns.
And then also, in terms of some of the hospitality taxes we collect, are we seeing any changes there at all? Are people traveling less or staying less? Is that having an impact? I know that's a significant source of revenue as well.
I haven't seen much reduction in the TOT. Those are still coming in pretty strong. We had an audit also this past year. We utilized HDL for that audit. And we received probably a little over $100,000 of corrected remittances from that audit. So that increased some of the revenues in the current year.
Does that track, actually, I was going to bring that up next. Does that track with the projection that they had when we approved that initial expenditure? They had estimated that we were going to get a certain amount of money. I can't remember what the exact amount was. Was it $150,000? I can't remember. And then I was going to see how that matched up to actual revenues that we collected.
So the TOT audit portion didn't give any projections. What we did do, I think what you're referring to is we utilize now HDL to enforce and collect TOT remittances. And then where we thought we could get extra revenues was with the short-term rentals. But a past discussion at council led me to believe that we're likely to not allow single resident rentals. So we haven't implemented that, that, implementation of short-term rental collections with HDL until we get a better idea of what's going to happen with council on that.
Okay. I thought when we had looked at that, when we hired the auditor, they said that they were going to, they estimated they were going to get a certain amount of money. And then from that, then I was going to bring up, can we check on that in the summer?
Yeah, that'd be the short-term rental portion. I believe it was somewhere, I think it was around $50,000 they're hoping to collect in that arena. But being that we're, the council was discussing the idea of not allowing short-term rentals to single residents, that would basically eliminate that revenue stream. So I didn't want to enter into an agreement where we implemented that and then have to turn around and cancel it. So I'm on hold on that.
But currently, though, we recovered around $100,000 from the audit, is what you're saying?
From a separate audit that was just on the TOT hotels that we had agreed to earlier.
That's good news. Can you tell me a little bit about the communication system that we're upgrading?
Yeah, right now, we haven't made a decision on which telecommunication route we're going to go. There are a couple, we could go with an upgrade of our current system. I know Teams has a version of a call system that would basically utilize a headset and calls that come through the computer. We're looking at what that might look like. We haven't made a decision on the system yet. Basically, we're just trying to make sure we secure the budget funding for it and then look at what the best option is for our, for our staff and our city operations.
Staff, it wouldn't be like a citywide communication system or something like that. It's internal.
Yeah, especially for City Hall and our other facilities.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I just want to thank you for all your work on this. I think this budget truly reflects the priorities of our city. It strikes a really good balance between funding essential services, investing in our future, and maintaining that fiscal discipline that I know we are so proud that we, that we do every year. So I can definitely. So I can definitely move forward with this. Thank you.
I just will say, good job to you and everyone that worked on this. Not really a critique of you, or the city rather, but to council. You know, this is again the second, it looks like the second budget with a structural deficit. And I know we've talked about this and we've talked about this, but, you know, reading Brad's, I like your picture, by the way, in here. It's very nice. But, great smile. But, but that being said, your transmittal letter, I think, you know, does not fall on deaf ears here. I do think, you know, I echo Councilmember Ratacos's praise of, you know, the budget working. But, you know, the body as a whole, we've chosen to go down this path. I don't agree that all services are essential that are included in this budget. And I think that there is fat to be trimmed like a good ribeye. So at some point, I think we need to dig into this and really look at prioritizing what we need and what we don't need. And I think that those are hard and difficult conversations. But we knew in, in 2018 or so on then-City Manager Blaine Michaelis's last meeting, when he says in five years, we're going to be facing a structural budget deficit on his last public meeting. And, and since then, we've had ARPA funds, we've had other ways, we've dodged this bullet. But I think, you know, we've, we've been blessed until this point. And so I don't think we can continue to move forward the way we have. I think the council as a whole and the city, I think we need to really start critically looking at it. And I understand the staff, you guys do everything you can. But it is ultimately the council's decisions that we, we move forward with in terms of fiscal policy. So that's all I'm going to say about it. I don't want to. I think the, the budget itself, the presentation's great, lots of pictures, good job. The other part of it is, is that the graphics, I think, are very helpful because the one criticism that always has come up and you've always continued to deliver on, and this is no, no shortcoming either, is, you know, we've talked about people not being able to understand and digest the budget. And I think you've made great strides over the last four or five years in terms of delivering data to people in something that is otherwise a very complex thing to understand. I think you've made it very digestible, and I appreciate that. And, you know, good job. And I hope that, you know, council, you know, be it this body or, you know, if some of us, you know, aren't here in the future, whoever is here, difficult things. And Mayor Morris talked about it long before we even, we're all seated here having this discussion. So it is, it is something that, I know the mayor's going to talk about flat revenues on Thursday, and I would imagine. And, and it is something we really seriously need to either find new funding sources or we need to make adjustments. But good job nonetheless. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one last question since it came up in our study session prior to the meeting. There was a question about when, was it Montavista that was going to be repaved? And I'm just curious, was that, this might be a question for Sherri, but do you, do you happen to know if that, when that's going to be accounted for in the budget? I didn't get a chance to check to see if that was one of the streets that was going to be paved or whether it's coming up in an upcoming budget. But I figured since it came up in a study session, it'd be good to have that.
We do have the street rehabilitation, Montavista from First to Gladstone, the $900,000. So I'm not sure if that covers the exact portion this individual in the meeting was speaking of, but it does state that. Maybe Sherri can clarify that.
City Council Sherri Garwick, Director of Public Works. So yes, Montavista Avenue is proposed for next year's budget. It does not include Sixth Street at this time, but we will look at it as we, we always try to expand the street if there's any funding available.
That's good news, and it's timely. Thank you.
Well, when you say timely, it was because some people stopped by tonight's public, public study session and discussed it, so it really is timely because they, they got an answer that they were looking for. So, and they were very excited about hearing that we were looking at it. But thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I have no questions. Just thank you, Michael, for all the work that you put into this. It is a monster every year, and, you know, the work that you and your staff put into it, it is obvious and it pays off. I very much agree with Ryan. This, this budget is very easy to understand and digest, which helps people like me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I agree with Ryan on a few things about starting to look and things are just going to start getting tight. And we're going to really seriously going to have to start looking at certain things. I think Ryan came up with a statement three, four, or five years ago about, it's time for us to start getting up and getting under the hood and start looking to see how things going. And we've been doing that as we move along. But it's like an older car. It takes a little time. You start realizing there's other problems that are coming along. And so we, we are going to have to move forward. But this is a great job from where you got us, got us at, and we appreciate it. And it's just, by the way, just dawned on me. I was looking for another five or six pages for my State of the City address. And Ryan brought up flat, flat revenues and stuff. So maybe we can make about five or six more pages to go along with the 50 pages and then prepare for the, for the State of the City. So now I feel better because it's now 55 pages versus two pages. So I think we, and you've guys done a great job. Thank you very much. Thank you for the leadership, Mike, in this endeavor. I know that it was tough dealing with the guys ahead of you. And long story short, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Move approval is recommended.
Don't put so much heart into it.
Well, it's a structural deficit, I mean, you know.
Any further questions?
Actually, just one change. I'd like Brad's photo changed. Just kidding.
One that's a little less flattering?
Right, yes. Not so much smile in that structural deficit proposal.
All right, we'll move on.
Who was, who had the second?
Me.
Weber. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Hearing none. The budget for 2526 passes 5-0. Okay, we're, move on to other business number two. Introduce ordinance 1327, amending the San Dimas Municipal Code, Chapter 10.6, Designating Speed Limits in Certain Streets in San Dimas. Staff?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and members of the public. I'm Stephen Baragon, Engineering Manager. And joining me up here next to me is David Gilbertson, City Engineer. This item was brought before the City Council at the last meeting of June 10th. And we've brought it back after reevaluating the speed limits for all the segments as requested. But before I go into the recommendations, I'd like to give a brief background for those who missed it from last meeting. The California Vehicle Code permits local authorities to establish speed limits on its roadways by ordinance. In order to enforce speed limits by the use of radar such as, such speed limits must be justified by an engineering and traffic survey, sometimes referred to as a speed survey. The speed survey must be objective and based on engineering principles and objective data. Setting a speed limit without the benefit of a supporting traffic's speed survey constitutes a speed trap and is considered illegal. The current speed limits set in the city of San Dimas were adopted by ordinance in early 2018 and then extended for a two-year period in early 2023, which brings us to today, which we need an updated survey. The city engineer was recently tasked to prepare a new engineering and traffic survey, which involved gathering and evaluating speed radar data, traffic count data, traffic collision data, and other contributing factors such as adjacent land use, roadway conditions, and continuity of speed. The Traffic Save Survey evaluated a total of 89 segments in San Dimas. And the recommendations were reviewed and re-reviewed with the Sheriff's Department as well as the city's Traffic Safety Committee. And their input was taken into consideration for the final recommendations. After additional review and reconsideration, nine segments were revised from the initial recommendations. So in most cases, there's no change from the existing speed limits. But 21 segments were warranted a change in speed by an increment of five miles per hour. 20 for a decrease and one for an increase. So summary of these recommendations and change in speed limits can be found in the council's staff report, as well as the supporting attachments included. Specifically, attachment number two gives a more detailed list of every segment. I think it's on page 501 of your report. On that one, it's, it shows the existing speed limits and the proposed speed limits. And the ones with change are in bold text, identified with either a D for a decrease or an I for an increase. And then attachment number one is the actual ordinance, ordinance 1327, which staff recommends to read by title and introduce by amending the San Dimas Municipal Code, Section 10.06, Designating Speed Limits on Certain Streets in the City. But prior, prior to doing so, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
No questions. I just want to say thank you for taking a second look at this. I know it's not something that we normally do to change so many speed limits, but it was kind of a shock to me at the beginning. And I think the ones that you revisited are appropriate. And I just appreciate the, the consideration and taking a look at this again.
Any further questions?
I'm just going to say thank you. Councilmember Weber called me, made me go through a lot of data and hear him out on this. So I appreciate you listening to him and hearing his concerns. But in all seriousness, as he shared at the last meeting, as I watched and listened, you know, I do think it's important that we, we look critically at this. And I do appreciate the time, and I appreciate the second look as well. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, quick question, just for clarification. When you revisited this, how many streets did you change the speed limit to compared to the previous one? I assume it was fewer, correct?
Correct. So there was a change, nine of, nine of them were revised to go back to the existing speed limits that were originally proposed as a decrease.
Got it. And then what was the reasoning behind those nine? Was it just that it was kind of, when you looked at it, it didn't end up making sense? Or were there different reasons for each one?
Yeah, we, we looked at all segments again. And these nine, we felt because of the 85th percentile, which is our starting point for, for all of these, was, was close to within them, either they were at the posted speed limit or they were a mile or two over or under. So they were really close to that, that posted speed. So obviously, the roadway is not changing that much. And some of these also, you know, it's kind of a continuation of, of the speed from adjacent segments. So you don't have that issue of speeds rising and lowering as you go along a segment. So it was kind of just to maintain that continuity.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say that I actually drove this as Councilmember Weber was talking to me about it. And I was actually citing signs just to make sure I was following along with this. And I do appreciate the work that went into it because it is, to your point, and San Dimas Avenue specifically, you know, watching the transitions and then looking what's posted, looking at the changes, it's just, it's thoughtful. And, and I, and I worry too about just, most of these segments, I think, are pretty established. I think it's, the change is negligible other than people letting off the gas a little bit. I think it'll make our streets safer in most instances, and I appreciate that too.
Any further questions?
I don't have any questions, but I will move that we read by title and introduce ordinance 1327.
Ordinance 1327. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Dimas, amending the San Dimas Municipal Code by amending the Section 10.06, there to Designating Speed Limits on Certain Streets in the City of San Dimas.
I move that we waive further reading and introduce.
Second?
Second?
Third? Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Anybody need a break or you want to move forward? Okay. We'll take a five-minute break. City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 24th. Okay, we'll go to public hearings. Approve updates to the citywide schedule of fees and charges, staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. Just to address some of the questions that were brought up earlier, I'll go ahead and touch on that before we get into my report. We do publicize the fee schedule changes or proposed changes in the daily bulletin. We put it on our website and we do have it here at City Hall at least 45 days before we take it. So it's been published for a while now for people to review and to discuss or to bring it up tonight's meeting. Most of the fees that were brought up, their majority, I believe pretty much all, will only impact large developments or developer projects, not so much single-family. Obviously, building permit fees, those are 3% increases matching the county's increase, still below the amounts that are in the user fee study. Those would affect single-family residents, but those have been ongoing every year increases, and we're just trying to keep up with the cost of delivering that permit service. The only one that may potentially be an issue for a single-family resident is the, any publications that need to get delivered mailings to residents in the surrounding area. There's not too many cases in a single-family. That would be, pretty much be a complete new build for that to require a notification. But there is that new fee recouping the costs for notifying any surrounding residents that are affected by development or rebuild of a single-family resident or any other development. So it's all part of the attachment, but in the agenda, I believe in the news page, starting with 510, the public notices mailing newspaper ads. That's the one that could potentially affect a single-family resident if you're basically building a whole new property from scratch. And I believe that was the majority of the questions asked. The calculations, our real calculations are again, 3% for business license and for the building permits. That's based on the CPI, March to March. And everything else is based on what is competitive with the areas around us, especially the recreation fees. And other ones, developer fees are based on full cost recovery, which was calculated in the user fee study that we approved in 2324. All right. So I'll continue with my report. The ad before you tonight is recommendations to adopt, as a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2025-30-39, which proposes updates to the citywide schedule of fees and charges. These updates include fee adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index and actual service delivery costs, as well as the introduction of new fees necessary to cover costs associated with plan reviews, facility rentals, permitting, public noticing, and compliance with recent state legislations such as Senate Bill 330. As discussed earlier, the city's general fund, to which many of these fees relate, currently faces a structural deficit of $981,944. While the proposed fees will not eliminate the gap entirely, they are a meaningful step toward reducing it in a substantial way. Over the past five years, annual inflation has peaked at rates as high as 8.5%, significantly impacting our labor, materials, and contract costs. The city began to implement fee increases in fiscal year 2324 with the adoption of the user fee study that addressed what our full cost recovery fixtures, figures are for the various fees we have. The first round of fee increases were less than full cost recovery as the city had waited many years to adjust fees and did not want to introduce significant increases all at one time. Last fiscal year and this fiscal year amendments to the fee schedule are helping to get our fees more in line with full cost recovery, while keeping in mind that we still need our fees to be comparable to our neighboring public agencies. While we understand that fee increases are never an easy decision for elected officials to make, the alternative, which is cutting programs or services, is even less desirable. Over the past year, we've heard directly from the public who value our services and programs. Many have expressed support for fee increases if it means preserving the amenities and services they rely on. The city remains in strong financial condition today, but continued fiscal responsibility demands that we recover costs where appropriate, particularly when the service primarily benefits an individual or business rather than broader community. The proposed changes are consistent with that principle and reflect careful analysis by staff across departments. Importantly, these fee adjustments follow the lead of other agencies recently discussed in this chamber, including the Sewer Maintenance District, the Chamber of Commerce in Los Angeles, County Parks and Recreation Department, all which implementing fee increases to sustain services. While I don't believe this report will result in any applause from our residents in the audience tonight, my hope is that they understand that staff greatly considers the impacts of fee increases before taking them to council for consideration. Our main injective is continue to deliver services that meet cities, our city's mission of improving the quality of life for our residents. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Oh, we'll come back to questions. We're going to open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter, please come forward.
Hi, Ruth Louvan again. While I understand the need to increase fees in order to become competitive with our sister cities and in order to compensate for the cost of inflation, as well as the rising cost of building and trade construction materials, I'm also very concerned about the businesses which service the City of San Dimas and their ability to be able to, A, afford to build here within the City of San Dimas, and B, for us, the residents, to be able to afford to hire those individuals to be able to work here. Now, many of these fees that have been discussed here, specifically the ones that I mentioned, were directed towards commercial businesses, but many of them are also residential. These fee changes take place across the board. They are not just targeted at commercial businesses. And I do believe that that is true. I did look through the schedule extensively. Now, with that being said, even if it was a commercial business, it does impact the retailer, which then impacts us, the people that live here as well. So I'm not against increasing fees. I did want to understand more specifically the fee increase schedule, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. But I also want to make sure that we, as a community, are not dramatically impacted by that. I think a fee that goes somewhere in the neighborhood between $2,500 to $8,500 can dramatically, can dramatically decrease a business's desire to want to build or work here within the City of San Dimas. And if a business does not want to work here within the City of San Dimas, or finds that San Dimas's fee rate has dramatically increased too much to want to do business here within the City of San Dimas, how is that helpful to me? And how is it helpful to you? I'm just wondering if that is a cause of concern. If indeed, that's not a cause of concern for anyone that's here at the diocese, well, then that's fine. Then that's obviously something that you have considered, and you're perfectly okay with that decision. I, however, see it as a cause of concern for me, the citizen. So perhaps I might be the one that's out of line here. But if I am, I just wanted to be sure that the business community is perfectly okay with this decision, and they see no problem with it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter? Seeing no one jumping up, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the city council?
I have one. Michael, where's the fee that was just referenced that went from 2,000 to 8,000? I don't remember seeing that in the fee schedule, and I can't seem to locate it.
I'm assuming she's looking at the community development, which is the page 516. There is one for tentative tract map, that's 2,500 to 8,500 PF 2.0. So I'm sorry, the exact numbers are 2,0533 and 8,53647. That may be, or the multifamily residential review board, 2,975 to 8,08184. Those are the only two I see going from two to eight. And again, this was, staff believes that most of these, where it's multifamily or tentative tract maps, are likely going to be large developments that are going to bring in a ton of revenue for themselves. So I don't see where we're at a line with those cities on this cost. I think we're going to more of a true number that's more general across the board, and I don't see it being an issue of attracting or pushing away developments because of this fee.
Then I guess the flip side to that question is, if you believe that that's more the market rate, why was the, why was the fee so low to begin with? And if it should have been higher?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Louis Torre, co-director of community development. To answer your question, a couple of years ago, we worked with a consultant to increase our fees, which we hadn't done in many, many years. What we did with that consultant, we provided the consultant for each application, staff members that work in the application, how many hours, so they can come up with what it actually costs staff to process that application. So essentially, 100% recovery. In doing, looking at the fees, we realized that even getting at 50%, 60% recovery wasn't to increase our fee significantly because we hadn't increased them in many years. So what we did, we came up with a number for each application, 100% recovery, and we increased them, depending on the application, anywhere between 20 and 50%. This particular application that the resident is talking about is for a tentative tract map, and that is when somebody wants to self-develop a property and create five or more parcels. Initially, before our fee increase, that application cost was, was $1,500. After we did the survey, we increased it to 2,533. And at that point, it was only 30% recovery. So essentially, I want to state and emphasize that these fees are being paid by developers. So essentially, we're So essentially, we're subsidizing these developers with 70% of the cost.
Got it.
And essentially, the residents are essentially subsidizing, subsidizing at the end of the day. So what we did this past year, we looked at fees that are mainly developer fees, and we felt that it was appropriate for these fees to be at 100% recovery because they're coming in here to subdivide these parcels, create developments, make their money and leave town. So these fees are not impacting residents. We don't feel that it's going to impact development. Just for comparison, that application for a tentative tract map that we're increasing to 8,000, the city of Rancho Cucamonga charges up to 15,000 for that same application. So we feel that these are in line. We're not impacting residents. We don't believe it's going to impact development. We actually continuously hear from developers that our fees are low compared to other cities. So we feel that 100% recovery is more than appropriate.
Well, if Rancho Cucamonga is charging 15,000, why are we not looking at charging a similar amount?
So if I had to guess, maybe it's it's the staff and maybe their so when we did the study, we provided the consultant with which staff members work on these applications, how many hours. So they could have come to that number different. Maybe they have higher level, higher level staff members working in it, which it's a higher blended rate in terms of how they get to that 100% recovery. But we feel that the 8,000 is a good is a good number.
Okay. If if is it a practice at all where cities may charge more than 100% recovery? So maybe they're trying to get 110, 120, 130?
We we can't. We have to keep it within the fee study that was approved.
I see. Okay. So that is, that's not legal.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm always thinking about profits. You know?
If I can add to that, the the reason why I can stand behind working towards full cost recovery with these types of items is because there are certain things that we provide that are services that are not full cost recovery. So if it's an individual need, I do believe that that individual should be paying for that need rather than the entire community subsidizing as a whole. If it were to be that our fees had been so low, I would have expected developers to be knocking at our doors. We should have no more vacant land if the fee was what was driving the person here. And I don't think that it is. I think that people want to build here because of our fantastic community, and I think that people will pay to build here. So I I see no problem that this would be prohibitive to the further development of our community.
I'll just say that one is I made some calls to people because nobody called me normally on an item like this. Developers would have called me and complained if there were problems. But to your point, when I called around asking a few people about this, it was exactly what you said, that, you know, cost of business is what it is. And candidly, I don't want to say people in that world felt sorry for us, but they very much readily admitted that our fees were well below where they should be, and that cost of business to them is just a line item in their project. So when they see an opportunity largely infill project type stuff here, that, you know, from their perspective, that's just cost of business, and that's a cost that we're missing that they see a savings with. So I think this is good to recuperate those costs, you know, especially at the time where we're at budgetarily. And, you know, and I understand to the community members' concern on this that I'd be the first person balking at fees and increases in that way. But I think by and large, the last, the the last several years, I mean, heck, since I got on council, it's just been a constant discussion regarding fees being grossly under, not just market, but under, under for a lot of different things, you know? So I think we've across the board, whether it's been parks and rec fees, whether it's been these fees or other fees, you know, I know we've we've spent a lot of time trying to get closer to where we need to be to close the gap on, as we heard earlier, the deficit in the budget. So I am supportive of this as recommended. I appreciate you guys taking the time. It makes sense. And to the point that I think both of you and Michael made, that this is, you know, and and Councilmember Protakos, like, this makes, this is just makes sense. Like, you know, these fees are are largely benefiting one entity oftentimes. So thank you.
I just want to say, and I won't mention the name of the business, but one of the one of the businesses that we have here that's very, very popular came, came, came about about three to four years ago, just about the same time we were hiring the fee consultant to talk about it. And I can remember having lunch, and like I said, it's a very popular place, and I was sitting there with the owner, and he looked at, looked at myself and Chris Constantine at the time, and he says, you know what? You may not want to believe it, but one of the reasons why I just decided on San Dimas versus the city of Whittier is your fees were so cheap, I couldn't believe it. And we just kind of looked at him because we were in the middle of this fee conversation because it's 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 hard to raise fees. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to hire a babysitter and give the babysitter $20 an hour because that's what it is now. Okay? Because you remember just giving it, you know, 750 or something like that. But, you know, he made it so clear, black and white, that, you know what? The cost of doing business, the cost of me putting my business here, cost me half of what it would have in in the city of Whittier. And I use the city of Whittier because that's where he said it was from. So, yeah, it's it's tough. It's tough raising fees. I also want to make a note that at the other end of this dais, Ryan has always been the, you know, stumbling block about raising fees. He's always bothered him. Okay? But I think after time, he's starting to realize that, like, like somebody local in downtown here said, if I lose $20, I'm never going to get the $20 back. That's why he didn't want to have a a San Dimas High School parade because he might lose $20. But the reality is, we're losing money, and there's a way, and and the developer is is going to be able to get it because he's just, he's going to unfortunately charge his consumer. But the reality is, they want to do the business here, and I think that we've now it's about time we start realizing that, you know, we got 35,000 people who want us to do smart business and and prepare for them. So I'll be supportive of this.
I have one more question and then one comment. So given that this area was one where we hadn't really done the analysis to ensure that we're doing cost recovery on, are there any other commercial fees that you think we should be looking at to ensure we're doing cost recovery there and we're not in the same conundrum where we're undercharging for fees that otherwise are being subsidized by the city and the taxpayers?
Increase, they're all developer-driven fees, so.
Outside of that, there's no others that you think?
Not not that I'm aware of, no.
And then my comment is, I do want to thank Ruth Louvan for bringing this up. This was a very educational discussion, so I really appreciate you going through it and identifying it and sparking this discussion and helping to educate all of us, because I don't think I would have mentioned this had you not done that. So kudos to you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing your homework. Thank you for being an involved citizen. It is appreciated.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 2025-39.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Do we have, must I be missing something?
One more.
Oh, sorry. Introduce ordinance 11329, approving municipal code text amendment 25-03, amending San Dimas Municipal Code, Chapter 18.142, to establish objective design standards and qualif for qualified housing and mixed-use developments. I'm sorry, I'm somewhere along the line, I'm double reading it.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mayor. Again, Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. The item before you this evening is a code amendment to introduce objective design standards into our code that would be applicable to multifamily developments and mixed-use developments. Just as part of a little background, over the past several years, the state has passed several laws that has taken local control away and allowed developers to come into communities and develop these multifamily developments without any discretionary view. A lot of these developments are allowed by right, and the state allows cities to only apply objective design standards. Two examples of such bills is SB 35 and SB 330, which, amongst several other requirements, requires cities to perform a streamlined review and only review them against objective design standards. In addition, a lot of these projects are not subject to review by any city board. They are allowed by right. Typically, projects will be subject to the city's architectural review process, which recently changed from DPRB to Planning Commission. However, projects eligible for streamlined review cannot be reviewed through this process as it is subjective and can only be reviewed against objective design standards. Therefore, as a result, the city worked with a consultant to prepare objective design standards that would be applicable to projects eligible for streamlining. These standards, which would be applicable to multifamily and mixed-use developments, are are objective and allows the city, at a minimum, to control the appearance of these projects that are allowed by right. These standards would be applicable citywide, with the exception of properties located within the downtown specific plan, as those, the downtown specific plan has their own objective design standards that are applicable for those developments. The standards are separated into two categories: site design standards, which regulate parking, circulation, open space, walls and fences; and the second category is building design standards, which regulate massing, architectural details, articulation, colors and materials. Upon completing the draft of these standards, staff presented them to the city council in December of 2024 to seek input on the proposed standards. The council supported the adoption of these standards. I do want to make a note right now that since these were presented to the city council, there has been one change in the sense that when we initially started this, the main goal was to create standards that would regulate streamlined projects, which are projects that are mainly allowed by right. We felt that these standards were really good. We're really happy with these, that we actually want to apply them to our projects. So they'll be applicable to not only streamlined projects, but our new multifamily and new mixed-use developments that are not eligible for streamlined development, and also existing multifamily and mixed-use developments. We feel that these are really good to have in place, and so why limit them to just these streamlined projects? So that's the only change. Subsequently to that meeting, these were presented to the planning commission. After discussion, discussing the the standards, the commission recommended approval to the city council with the added language that they that we amend the ordinance to allow unlimited waivers of the standards subject to approval by the planning commission. The ordinance that you have before you this evening does not include that language of waivers, and the reason behind that is because we discussed this with the city attorney's office, and there was some concern that allowing waivers could potentially create a conflict with state law and our municipal code, specifically allowing waivers for streamlined projects that are must be reviewed administratively, but making these waivers discretionary. That essentially can create a conflict with the by-right process of these developments. In addition, in addition, allowing unlimited waivers to non-streamlined projects conflicts with our city's municipal code as that would require a variance. So under a current process, under a current code, any development seeking modification or relief or deviation from the current standards, they have to apply for a variance. So allowing waivers would potentially create conflict, and therefore, we did not include that in the ordinance. However, we did include, under the alternative section, if the city council did want to consider and allow waivers of these standards, we did provide some language that can be included in the ordinance. However, in order to be compliant with state law and our city code, we would recommend that those waivers not be subject to any discretionary view. So essentially, if an applicant, essentially, an applicant will request a waiver, and then she'll be granted. The commission recommended unlimited waivers. Staff would recommend the city wants to do waivers to limit them to three waivers from each category, up to three, so a total of six waivers. And also, for projects that are not eligible for streamline, streamlining under the Housing Crisis Act, those would not be eligible for these waivers, as those would be subject to the variance process. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the council about this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions of staff?
I guess, Louis, if you could just give us like a real-life situation of when a waiver would be asked for, like, what that looks like, so we know what it is when it's actually happening. Right now, it's very theoretical, right?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot of standards that we created, which we believe that collectively they will, the end result would be a nice-looking development. So if the council was to consider waivers, essentially, if, for example, under the building design waivers standards, there's, and there, there's standards in there that control massing and articulation. For example, the second, the upper levels have to be stepped back. A developer can come in and ask for one of those waivers. Or we require that the garage doors be recessed to provide some interest in articulation. I think they require there to be recessed 12 inches. They could request that, a waiver for that. So it could be any of the the standards that we've had put in place. We initially did not include the waivers because initially we were crafting these standards for projects that are by right. And so our thought was that if the state's already taking local control and allowing these projects to be developed, you know, without any city review, why make it easier for them?
Right.
So that's initially, we didn't include any waivers in the in the language. So we feel that these standards are 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 really good. Actually, the standards that we adopted in the downtown specific plan were actually modeled after these, so we believe that implementing these standards will, the end result would be good developments that the city is used to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I will move that we read by title and introduce ordinance 1329.
Ordinance 1329, in ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, California, approving municipal code text amendment 25-03, a request to amend the city of San Dimas Municipal Code, Title 18, to create objective design standards for multifamily residential and mixed-use development projects.
Will we waive further reading and introduce?
Second.
Second.
Second by Protakos. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. We'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or may be determined by the chair. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close oral communications. City managers report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, city council. Just a couple of items. Golden State Water started a major project to replace the east and west water reservoirs located just south of Gladstone between Amelia and San Dimas Avenue. The work is expected to take about 16 months to complete wrapping up in the fall of 2026. All the construction will stay on their properties, so we're not expecting any major impacts to Gladstone. Golden State Water has acknowledged that the visual significance of the tanks as a local landmark and has submitted plans that preserve the existing look for when this project is done. So if you see that going on, that's Golden State Water. I wanted to recognize that the final DPRB meeting was held this morning, and I want to take a moment to thank all the board members, past and present, that donated their time and dedicated service to the DPRB over the years. Really appreciate your time, but the last one was this morning, so we're moving forward.
Could you take a moment to explain what that really means? If people say DPRBs gone, what, where's that function going to?
So the city council took action to, DPRB was a body that approved the exterior of buildings or any development in the downtown or throughout the community. The the review process has been now been delegated to either the planning commission or the director, so that the the review process of the DPRB is not going away. It's just being done by different bodies, either the planning commission or the director, which is going to streamline different projects, so they don't have another step, another body to be presented in front of, which was a direction the council's been wanting to go in for the last probably year, year and a half.
Thank you.
Sylvia from the chamber mentioned this, but Thursday is the state of the city. The event is at 8:30 a.m. in the Senior Center. The doors open at 7:30, so join us to hear about recent accomplishments, upcoming projects, and how we're working to serve the city of San Dimas. And lastly, just a reminder that city offices and facilities will be closed next Friday in observance of 4th of July. So everyone have a safe holiday. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? Seeing none, city attorney?
Mayor, we do have a closed session tonight and an initiation of litigation closed session, but other than that, no reports.
Thank you. I must hate that page. Yeah, it's gone. All right, members of the city council, council members reporting meetings attended at the expense of the local agency. Seeing none, city council requests for future items, comments and updates. Mr. Nikano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one request. As many of you know, we have a number of residents who go on and do incredible things in the world and who are noted for all kinds of accomplishments. And it has come to my attention that J.J. Spahn won the U.S. Open. It's a significant achievement. He's only a former, I think he's a former resident, I don't know if he still lives here, of San Dimas, but I know that he's also a graduate of San Dimas High School.
Graduate.
And with that, I would move that we honor him and recognize him, given that we have a history of doing so for those who achieved special, I don't know what the right word is, but high, high honors and achievements. So with that, I'd request that be on the, at a future agenda. Maybe we can have staff work with him or his representatives to see if he'd come and receive that honor. But I think it'd be appropriate for the city to recognize one of our own for such a accomplishment. And that's all that I have.
I support that.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, how we would reach him, but I think he's, might be a resident of South Pasadena now, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I might know someone.
You might know someone?
Yeah.
We'll leave that up to the city clerk then. Okay? Mr. Weber?
I'll, I'll keep it short. The only thing that I will say is thank you to city staff for putting on the movie in the park last, or Wednesday before last. The movie was a hit with my kids. And just this evening, when I was getting ready to, to come in for the meeting, my four-year-old asked me, hey, we should go to watch a movie in the park again. And I said, well, it's not every day. I think she was a little mixed up. But she was, it was memorable enough for her that she remembered it two weeks later, which I thought was pretty neat. So thank you for putting that on. It was very well attended. And that's it.
So I attended Cars and Coffee this weekend. It was wonderful. It was a really, really great event, even with all of the humidity. People were out there with their beautiful cars and trucks, and I saw families just really enjoying themselves. So it was a great kickoff to Cars and Coffee. This Thursday, I will be attending the, where is the word? American Planning Association of Los Angeles 2025 Planning Awards. I'm just going to read from this because it says it better than I could. "The City of San Dimas Downtown Specific Plan has been selected to receive the Award of Merit under the Neighborhood Planning Award category for the American Planning Association. Every year, the American Planning Association recognizes outstanding projects, programs, plans and people for the APA Los Angeles Planning Awards. Award categories encompass a wide range of achievements by small and large jurisdictions, community organizations, firms and individuals. This year, staff submitted an application for the Downtown Specific Plan under the Neighborhood Planning category. The Neighborhood Planning Award is awarded to a neighborhood plan, program, design or related effort that demonstrates innovative planning principles and measures that create sustainable neighborhoods of lasting value. I'm happy to report that the Downtown Specific Plan was selected for an Award of Merit, which is second place in the category, and only two awards are given for that category. So I will be in attendance on Thursday to take in all the praise and report back, but we have an amazing community development director and planning department that just did wonderful. So thank you so much."
Thank you. Mr. Vienna?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. One is, I just wanted to thank everybody. I didn't get to the last council meeting. Unfortunately, my professional duties due to some unrest in the communities pulled me away. So I apologize to the council, but appreciate your understanding during that trying time. I did have the opportunity to walk by Cars and Coffee this weekend as I went to get my haircut, and my wife intended to walk over with the dog. But I did see it was well-attended, and so great job, Scott. And actually, as I was getting my haircut, there was a lot of discussion about it, even from people who were visiting from out of town, actually, that talked about just really liking it. One of the guys at the barber shop asked if Honda Civics would be allowed to participate. So I just smiled and I left that alone. But I'm sure we're very inclusive, and in fact, a Honda Civic would be welcome. So that being said, you know, I will say the, the 4th of July is ahead of us, so I would just ask that everybody is mindful. You know, again, there is no fireworks permitted within the city. And we are, as you've seen, a high-fire-risk area most of us live in, dang near the whole city. So please be mindful. There are plenty of opportunities to go check out fireworks all around us, but please don't, don't light them off if, just don't do it, I guess. Also, the sheriff's department also does enforcement related to that, so does the fire department, and the fines are significant. So please be mindful. And the last thing I'll say is I, I do appreciate in my professional duties, the San Dimas Mountain Rescue Team has been helping with a missing hiker located up in the Angeles National Forest with the Montrose Search and Rescue Team, who's been missing since Sunday. And so many of the San Dimas Mountain Rescue Team members went on Sunday and were part of the first response to be able to look for the missing hiker. She is still missing at this point, but there has been a lot of efforts trying to locate that person. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of our volunteers and our reserves who go through countless hours and give countless hours of service to helping people up in the treacherous areas. And I did go up to that command post the other day, yesterday, in fact. And it is way up there, and it is very treacherous, this particular place. It really makes you appreciate the eight months of mountaineering training and all the other things that go into the people that serve on our search and rescue team. Thank you, Mayor. And lastly, I just want to say happy birthday, Mayor, one last time. And again, I've looked forward to telling you that all year, and I'll look forward to it again.
Thank you, thank you. Sherry, do you mind taking a moment to speak about tomorrow night's meeting?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Sherry Garwick, Director of Public Works. Tomorrow evening, council will be having a study session at 5:30 p.m. at City Hall in Council Conference Room regarding the parking management plan for the Gold Line or A Line. Council's entertaining, looking at ways to protect the parking for our, for our businesses and residents. We'll be reviewing some parking restrictions as a way to prevent commuter parking in business stalls and, or in the downtown business area. Also look at discussing potential implementation of residential permit parking in areas that neighborhoods request it. And we're looking at some of the items that we've provided for private parking lots, some information for private parking lots on ways to enforce, you know, prevent commuter parking in the, in the private parking stalls, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
This is a conversation that's been, been held, been held for the last two, three years concerning the parking in the downtown area with the loss of the park-and-ride space over there. Parking has become a jewel, and I, and I can remember saying years ago that I could only hope for a parking problem in downtown. And now it's here, and it's actually scary, you know, because we, things are, things are there. But tomorrow night, if you have anything else, you don't have anything else to do, and you really have an interest in what's going on and where are you going to park and when are people coming to visit? You need to come and voice your opinion because we are going to move forward with a parking plan. And that, that doesn't mean that it won't be altered downline. But tomorrow night, we have to put things in play for the staff. We'll be able to be instrumental in about three weeks, four weeks, when the A Line actually goes full ride. We gotta, we have to have a parking plan in place. So tomorrow night will be one of those nights that are very, very important. So think about it, come out, voice your opinion. I too attended the Cars and Coffee. It was very well-attended. I think that Parks has come up with something that they, they enjoy, as well as the community enjoys, and thank you very much to Parks. I really appreciate that. On last Saturday, I had heard that, the last Saturday, I attended the Laverne A Line Station opening. The day before, Pomona opened there. So at, at this current time, all four stations for the A Line in the Gold Line system, the last one to, to Pomona, they're, they're now been dedicated. And hopefully, within four weeks to six weeks, the train will start, and it'll be running, you know, every day. And it's according to the, the people at Bay there, they said it's going to be running and it's going to have full capacity. But I don't know about that. The reality is that it's really a quiet system. I think you could probably get on a train and go from here to Pasadena and sleep, if you trust it. But no, they're, they're there. They're really moving forward. And as some people have told me who have attended some of these functions, is that the A Line, the Gold Line Authority are putting together a good program, and it's been a real, a real class act to see them open up this track. I think they're taking a lot of pride in it, so I appreciate that. Last Saturday night, myself, along with the Assistant City Manager and Ryan Vienna and Eric Nikano, we attended the ALAD's award ceremony. There were probably 350, 400 people in, in attendance, and I think about 150 of them got awards. They, the sheriffs, you know, presented their finest. And we, we really appreciated it. We were glad that we were invited guests, and we were there. But they highlighted truly a lot of people that really went out of their way to do a public service. And because of what we had in the beginning of the year with the fires, a lot of those people who, who really faced some real problems helping people, they were, you know, they were shown to be real, real heroes. And I want to just thank them, those members of those, that organization, the sheriffs in LA County Fire, for what they did. Because they saved a lot of people. They may have lost some homes and everything else, but we didn't, you know, and we lost some, fortunately, we lost some lives. But we could have lost a tremendous amount more. And I, I do want to make sure publicly that we, we recognize the fact that, that we're pretty fortunate here to have to be serviced by those two organizations. And the last thing I'll say right now is if you have nothing better to do with your time, on Thursday morning, we are going to do the State of the City. I want you to know the State of the City is in really good shape. I don't know how the speech will be, but the State, State of the City is in really great shape. And, you know, if you've got something to do and you want to get some free coffee and some free donuts and stuff, the Chamber of Commerce puts on a pretty good shindig. So hopefully, you might take the time and come out and, and see what your, what your community has been doing for the last year and in the future. Okay? At that point, I think I'll entertain a motion for no.
One thing, just one thing. Councilmember Nikano talked about recognizing people, and I know I mentioned this to you, Mayor, but I'd like to take some time at some point in the near future to recognize formally our long-term librarian that served this community. I think that, you know, she stood here with us through a very, very fascinating times through history. But I think it's only fitting that we do do something for her and invite her back to be recognized.
Think the city clerk could reach out to the library and find out the information we need for that? I, I, I very much second that.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right? All right, now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll go into closed session in five minutes. Good night. Thank you for your attendance.